All the, yep.
I'm just listening to them over here and I'm just talking to myself.
Fair enough. All right. So we're officially going to call the December 4th, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. And let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please rise and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This will be the last regular public meeting of the Buncombe County Commission for 2018. We are entering what is a holy season for many people and communities of faith in our mountains. So before we begin our meeting this evening, let's hold a moment of silence to reflect on what this season means for each of us individually, and for our families, and for our community. May we take time, may we all take time to remember and enjoy what is authentic and sacred in this special time of year. Please join us in a moment of silence. Before we go further, I'd like to announce that we have parking validation for members of the public who are participating in our county commission meeting this evening. So if you parked in the county parking facilities next to 200 College Street, you can please see one of the deputies who are at the meeting this evening, and they can give you validation for your parking. And also, if you used public transit to travel to the meeting, you can also get validation for your transit travel as well. And so before we, before we go further, I want to acknowledge we have with us our former county commission chairman, David Gant, is with us this evening. Chairman Gant, it's always great to see you, and thank you for being with us this evening. I also see that we have the mayor of Black Mountain, Don Collins, with us as well. Mayor, it's great to see you as well, and thank you for being with us. So before we go further, I want to ask county commission, county commissioner Ellen Frost, if she would please join us up at the podium. And I'm gonna share something with her, and anybody who would like to join me is welcome to come down as well.
Let's go.
Yeah. Merry Christmas.
I know, it's like every day. Yes.
So we just want to, we just want to acknowledge that Commissioner, Commissioner Ellen Frost's term ended yesterday, I think was the last official day. So we were all, all of us have worked with Ellen, except for Amanda, who's just our newest member on the commission, have worked with Ellen for many years on the county commission. So we just wanted to acknowledge your service on the county commission, and we've got something to present to you to acknowledge your time on the Buncombe County Commission. And, and we'd welcome if you'd like to share any words while you're here this evening.
Thank you. It has been the greatest honor to serve the citizens of Buncombe County. Second to that honor has been working with this extraordinary county staff. Commissioners could have an idea, like the Family Justice Center, and staff would make it happen. And you continue to amaze me. And George, thank you for coming on board and riding the ship. We got sailing on a good course, but it has been humbling. But I have to tell you something anecdotally. So Thanksgiving Day, to be candid, it was a partisan Thanksgiving. And one of my really good friends said, "What's it like to serve with them?" And I said, "Who are you talking about?" They said, "Well, they're Republicans." And I said, "It has been such an honor." And I said, "I will tell you, this commission cares so deeply for the citizens of Buncombe County, it's overwhelming." And, you know, we've gone through a lot, we've accomplished a lot, and, you know, I can't thank Chairman Gant enough for his mentorship and what he's done and what he means. But when you look around at what wasn't here before some of us started, and now it is, it's all become a reality. And Browning, you took over the helm after Chairman Gant and did an extraordinary job and continue to do. So Buncombe County is in great shape, and I'm honored at your friendships and continue to talk and carry on the amazing work you did. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Stay with it.
All right. All right, good luck. Thank you.
Okay. I need to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all items voted on by the board this evening. All right. So we come to the consent agenda. So there was a request earlier to add two items to the consent agenda, including the FY19 Solid Waste Capital Projects Fund and Enterprise Fund. Those last two items on the budget amendments on the regular agenda.
So I'll make a motion to move those two items to the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Those are added to the consent agenda. And there's a request to remove the resolution authorizing the acceptance of applications and approval of housing projects for the Affordable Housing Services Program from the consent agenda. And just, and just for clarification, Commissioner Frye, did you want to remove it from the consent agenda, or was there just a question about it?
Well, I'd like to discuss it.
Okay. Why don't we, do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to move it to new business?
Well, we might move it to new business.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna move-
To new business.
We're gonna move the resolution authorizing acceptance of applications and approval of housing projects for the Affordable Housing Services Program. We're gonna move that to new business. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as advertised?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. Also, I forgot to mention, please, if you've got a cellphone with you, please turn it off or turn it to mute. Okay. The next item on the agenda is under Good News, and Rebecca Smith is going to share some information with us about the START program and the Innovation Award with Buncombe County HHS and FPS.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here again to speak with you about something positive that's going on in the Social Work Department and Health and Human Services. First, I'd like to just read the nomination for the Innovation Award, and then we're gonna play a short video that I think will kind of speak for itself in how special this program truly is to our community. The Center for Integrative Health established this new awards program, the Innovation Awards, actually this year. These awards recognize innovation in services and programming to increase integrated whole person approaches to care. And the nomination that we submitted is that Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services and Family Preservation Services of North Carolina joined forces to implement a sobriety treatment and recovery team, the START model, developed and based on the START Kentucky model. START is an intensive child welfare program for families with co-occurring substance use and child maltreatment, delivered in an integrated manner with local addiction treatment services. START pairs child protective services workers trained in family engagement with family mentors or peer support specialists who are in long-term recovery and had their own child protective services case as part of their life experience, and a coordinator using a system of care and team decision-making approach with families, treatment providers, and the courts. The system of care approach for START incorporates multiple theories and principles that guide interventions at different points in time. These include attachment theory, self-determination theory, crisis theory, readiness to change theory, network for improvement of addiction, treatment change, and neurorehabilitation principles. Essential elements of the model include quick entry into START services to safely maintain child placement in the home when possible, and rapid access to intensive addiction mental health assessment and treatment. Each START CPS worker, mentor, dyad, has a capped caseload of 10, allowing the team to work intensely with the families, engage them in individualized wraparound services, and identify natural supports with goals of child safety, permanency, and parental sobriety and capacity. The goals of sobriety treatment and recovery teams include ensuring child safety, reducing entry into out-of-home care, achieving parental sobriety in time to meet asfa permanency timeframes, improve parental capacity to care for children, and to engage in essential life tasks, reduce repeat maltreatment and reentry into out-of-home care, and expand behavioral health system quality of care and service capacity as needed to effectively serve families with parental substance use and child maltreatment issues. And so the START team was awarded the Innovations Award this year, and we actually have a, our coworkers through Family Preservation Services are going to be accepting that award this week at a conference. So we wanted to acknowledge the work of the START team, and we want to share this video with you that truly describes the impact of this model.
Me and my fiance, when my fiance was sick on heroin and I was sick on meth. And we had a beautiful little girl, and it was time to grow up. And y'all come inside, that's pretty much it.
So I'm a person of long-term recovery, and I have personal experience with the Department of Social Services. I was separated from my son due to my inability to stop using. Didn't really have any place to turn or a foundation to like go off of. So by the time I got separated from my son, he was put into six different placements through the process of me trying to get better, and it took a while for me to get better.
Honestly, at first, I was mad. I didn't like anybody telling me what I can do and couldn't do with my kid. About three months went by, starting to understand why and seeing. And I understand now why. Because, I mean, it was hard. It was really hard. It was confusing.
I think that if I would've had the START team involved at that time, I probably wouldn't have had a three-year separation from my child. I think that he may not have had six placements through that three-year separation because my mom may have felt more supported.
What I had said in my mind what was gonna happen, it really was totally different than what actually happened. I figured we'd come into this program and y'all didn't beat us down, and you did.
START stands for the Sobriety Treatment and Recovery Team. Buncombe County Health and Human Services adopted the START model in 2017 as a response to the growing opioid crisis. It is a child welfare program for families with co-occurring substance use and child maltreatment. A START team is made up of three key elements: a specially-trained child protective services, or CPS, social worker; a family mentor who is a certified peer support specialist in long-term recovery, who has had their own child protective services case as part of their life experience; a service coordinator who is a licensed clinical addiction specialist that provides rapid assessment and linkage to treatment for the parent within days of their CPS case opening. Each of these START social worker mentor teams share a caseload and work intensively with families to support a parent's journey into recovery, minimize or eliminate separation when possible, foster positive attachments between children and parents while their parent is supported through wraparound services in the community such as trauma-focused therapy, safe and sober housing, mental health, and substance use treatment. Our aim is that in less than one week, the parent begins treatment. Once engaged, the START team continues to support the parent through their treatment journey to ensure that they don't fall through some of the common cracks in the system. The Buncombe County START program works with a diverse group of community stakeholders that meet regularly to improve our ability to address co-occurring addiction and child maltreatment. The START model holds hope for families we work with. The many success stories we have witnessed prove to us many times over that recovery does heal families, and that even some of the most tragic situations caused by drug and alcohol use are not the end of the road. Rather, they have the potential to be the beginning of a healing journey for a whole family.
We didn't have anything like the START model. The START model offers people a support in a way that has never been offered before.
I mean, it's like, when you walk into a place, you got good cop backup. Well, this is good cop and good cop.
One of the things that happened when I was reuniting with my son was I stood in a grocery store, and I remember just standing there and crying because I didn't even know how to shop or what to shop for. So you have to relearn everything, you know? And if you have people that support you in doing that, it makes it a little bit easier for that to happen.
My girls say all the time, "Y'all, y'all gave us back to them," so.
Being a peer family mentor on the START team, I can share that with parents, that it's gonna be hard when you get your child back, you know, when you are able to reunite with your child. It's challenging, but it's possible to walk through it.
I come into the hospital thinking the world was gonna end and leaving, thinking my life's fixing to start over.
One of those sayings that I like from the fellowship that I'm a part of is that the broader the base, the higher the point of freedom. And it's like, if we all get down on this base level, and I say this all the time, I'm like, if we're all down on this base level, healing and doing things to heal, then the higher the point of freedom for everybody, for our community, not just the recovering addicts, but everybody gets the benefits of that.
So again, I just want to acknowledge the work that the START team has done since implementing in August of 2017. We have a few members of our START team here today. We have Dan Pizzo, you guys want to stand and just be acknowledged, Tori Dever, and Paul Daly. They all work with families every, every day to, to do this very, very difficult work. And so I just want to thank them so much for what they've achieved so far and what I know is possible through this model for our county. I also just quickly want to say how privileged I feel to work for Buncombe County. We are the only county in this state that has adopted this model. It is, it is a very promising practice that started in actually Ohio and then was adopted in Kentucky. And we know from the data that they have in Kentucky that we can really make a difference for families with this model, a long-term difference. And so I just really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of that within Buncombe County. And then I just want to finalize by saying that so far, the START program has graduated 15 families through the program, with 21 parents within those 15 families going from being substance, active substance users to a state of recovery. And so I had the opportunity to be a part of a graduation last week, and I heard another father say very similar things to this father, and I think we're just gonna repeat that success over and over again. So I truly appreciate the opportunity to be here to acknowledge the program and appreciate all of the support that you all provide.
Rebecca, thank you. And to all the, all the folks who are involved in this, this important work, we want to say thank you. It's, it's really exciting, it's very inspiring. So thank you to all of you for what you're doing on this really important issue. Thank you. All right. Let's give them a round of applause. That was pretty awesome. Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation on the revaluation process and the revaluation fund statute. And Keith Miller is gonna help us out with this item. Keith, thanks for being with us.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's time to talk again about reappraisal. So let me, I want to share a few things with you this evening and just really have a discussion with you, and then we'll talk about where we'll go to from here. But it starts with the North Carolina General Statute 105-286, which sets forth the time for general reappraisal for all counties in the, in the state of North Carolina, which says that we are on an octennial cycle, which is every eight years is the minimum for doing a reappraisal in every county in North Carolina. Buncombe, as a lot of counties in North Carolina now are on a four-year cycle, we find that to be the most effective for the citizens, for the county alike. So we did the reappraisal last January of 2017, so I'm gonna share a few things with you on why that I'm here, back here this soon to talk to you about this. One other thing I want to mention to you in 105-286 for time for reappraisal that was added a few years ago is a mandatory advancement. So there is a mandatory advancement in the statute which will trigger an automatic reappraisal if, before the eight-year cycle comes, if the sales ratio study comes in below 85% or greater than 115%, then the county chairman will receive a letter from the North Carolina Department of Revenue, putting us on notice that you must complete a reappraisal within the next two years. So let me share a little information with you then while we're there. January of 2017, reported from the North Carolina Department of Revenue, we had a sales ratio median of 98.73% with a coefficient dispersion of 14.49. January then, the end of January of 2018, we received a sales ratio study, 91.67%, 18.52 COD. So we went from 97 down to 91 in one year. Our third quarter internal sales ratio study now shows us that we are near 86% internally in the market. So what that means to you is that there is a good possibility that when the sales ratio study comes out for 2020, which will be April, that we will be below the 85% mark and will get put on notice to conduct a general reappraisal. I am asking you this, this evening to discuss advancing that reappraisal. Let's be proactive and get ahead of that, advance that reappraisal to January the 1st, 2021. That will get us back on the four-year cycle. North Carolina Department of Revenue also has recently developed their own internal reappraisal standards. Now, you hear me talk a lot about the North Carolina Department of Revenue, so what you need to understand is North Carolina Department of Revenue is the oversight for all tax departments in the state of North Carolina. They oversee that we are doing things equitably, that the laws are applied, they're applied fairly, and they're applied equally across the state. So they do monitor what we do. So recently, they developed their own reappraisal standards, which ask the county to do a few things. If the sales ratio falls below 90%, then they're asking that we consider a general reappraisal. They have also put in the standards now that they want us to measure the quality of our data. The quality of the data will depend upon the type of reappraisal that they recommend that the county do. I will tell you that we finished that quality of data. It was a random sample that the Department of Revenue picked, and I'm proud to say that we came in between 96 and 98% of accuracy on 1,001 parcels of real estate in Buncombe County. So I'm proud of our team that has done that for us, and what that means to you is that we don't have to do a full list. When I say that, a full list, if that number had came back lower, the North Carolina Department of Revenue would have recommended to you that you relist every parcel in the county and recollect the data for every parcel in the county in order to have more accurate data. That becomes very expensive when you do that, and when you're visiting to remeasure every parcel. So we do not, are not gonna be required to do that because of the great job that our staff does every day. The next thing is now in the standards, is that the county assessors submit to the North Carolina Department of Revenue 24 months in advance of the next general reappraisal. So that means if you decide you want to advance it to January 2021, then my written plan to the Department of Revenue would be submitted in January of 2019. So that puts us into the, a little bit of a time crunch of where we're going. The other thing that, that I will tell you, ask you to consider, as we often don't talk about, as the sales ratio reduces, as we go into time and we get back to 86%, once we drop below 90%, the statute says for public service, public service entities are appraised at 100% of market value each year. Public service being Duke Energy, your airlines, train, railroad, these type of things that Department of Revenue assesses, 100% each year. However, when, when the ratio falls below 90% in the fourth year after the general reappraisal, public service companies get an adjustment in that value. So what I ask you to consider there is that if you, if you don't stay on that cycle and keep the ratio where it should be, then you start losing revenue from your public service companies. We're currently at about 730 million in value on public service companies in Buncombe County. So you would not want to risk losing 15% of that because we're not doing a reappraisal. So that's the other thing for you to consider. The other thing for us to discuss tonight is General Statute 153A-150. That is the reserve for reappraisal. To bring us into compliance with this statute, what I'm asking is that this board have a resolution to create a special fund for the expenses of reappraisal. This is mandated by the statute and should be done. We are spending the money anyway, it's just the fact that we're, we getting the money out of different budgets, maybe IT capital, maybe tax. Now, the statute really tells the assessor that we should be putting, setting aside a reserve every year in that reappraisal fund in order to be able to conduct that reappraisal. So I'm asking also for that to be considered. So I'm happy to discuss any of these things, answer your questions. I will, upon your direction, hopefully bring back to you at your next meeting, a resolution. And that resolution would ask you for three things. That would be to advance the octennial reappraisal to January 1, 2021. Number two will be to, in accordance with the provisions of 153A-150, that the county finance director and the county budget director establish a general reappraisal fund and allocate the funds for that through the budget. Three, that a new reappraisal cycle hereby be designated, all reapartments in the county be reappraised every four years following the January 1, 2021 date. Any questions?
I have, I have one. So if we establish four years going forward, can that be, that can be changed if something occurred that we-
Yes.
-we did not want to do that.
I'll say yes, and your legal folks can overrule me if they wish, but even if I bring this back to you and ask you to advance the next reappraisal to 2021, something happens in the real estate market, we can always come back and ask for that resolution, another resolution changing that date to something different. But setting, going ahead and set a date, looking forward to be proactive, this helps us plan, it helps us budget, and be prepared to be able to complete that. Anything else?
I'm just, so unclear, so if we, if we did nothing, we just stayed on the four-year schedule right now, when would you do it? When would the next reappraisal be completed, 2022?
You're actually not on a four-year schedule at the moment. The last resolution after January 2017 put the county back on an eight-year cycle.
It did.
So if you do nothing now, then you don't have to do it until eight years.
So what you're proposing is that you put it on a four-year-
I'm proposing that we go-
You're not, you're not asking to accelerate it to less than four years, but just-
Four years.
Two, four years.
Yes. Just come back to four years. Yes.
Okay.
And we've been on a four-year cycle. This is probably my sixth reevaluation with Buncombe County, and we've been on a four-year cycle, except for one time when we had the recession, we went to six years, but we've always been on a four-year cycle.
Yep. Any-
Thank you.
Any-
County, and we've been on a four-year cycle, except for one time when we had the recession, we went to six years. But we've always been on a four-year cycle.
Yep. Any questions or comments?
I'm certainly supportive of the four-year cycle. I think the, and I think it was before any of us were on the commission, when they deferred it to, in the last time during the Great Recession. But those were, of course, highly unique circumstances.
Yes.
Let's hope. And so, that probably, probably made all the sense in the world at that time. But I think as a general schedule, four years makes sense. If we, if we go longer than that, then when we do do it, it's, you know, it would be, I think the, it'd be too much of a jolt to the system. So, I think four years is, we don't want to do it too frequently, but not, not too infrequently. So, four years feels right to me. Any other thoughts for Keith?
I know the first year that, that I was a commissioner, it was on a longer than a four-year cycle. And it was, it was difficult. It was difficult and the adjustment was, was, was quite large. And so, I think this would be, I think there's equity in, in the four-year cycles.
Correct. And just, just a reminder, if I may say, Mr. Chairman, that reappraisal was designed for equity. It creates equity between all the taxpayers. Just, just as a reminder for everyone, you know, reappraisal's not just about, you know, creating more value. It is really about equity because some neighborhoods in the county accelerate in appreciation larger than others, and all people are taxed as to value. So, you may have some citizens that are paying their taxes on 80% of the value and some that are paying on 90% of the value. So, doing a reappraisal fixes that equity problem to assure that all citizens are paying their fair share.
All right. Well, any other, it sounds that we don't need to vote on anything tonight. Keith will bring back a resolution. Is there any other feedback we want to give him before he does that? All right. All right, hearing none. It sounds like, it sounds like we're ready to consider those recommendations in an upcoming meeting. All right. Next up is a presentation on the, on Asheville's Transit Master Plan, and Matt Cable will present this item. Matt, thanks for being with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present information to you on the city of Asheville's Transit Master Plan. And Max will be pulling up a presentation for us in just a moment. But I just wanted to preface this presentation by noting that I do believe that this presentation will obviously bring up some questions. It's meant to identify what's forthcoming from the city, what items that the Board of Commissioners will be considering, both in the short term, in the coming months, and also in the upcoming years with regard to the city's implementation of this plan. So, a transit master plan is like most plans. In this case, it's obviously focused on the transit system that the city of Asheville operates. But the purposes of the plan are to shape how and where bus service will be provided by the city and giving them a vision for a long-term service expansion and also infrastructure needs. This plan is scoped out for 10 years, and it will begin with implementation in fiscal year 2020. So, we expect to see some of that plan progress forward with July 1 of 2019. The process for this particular plan was actually fairly rapid in terms of proceeding with an update to the Transit Master Plan for the city. The original Transit Master Plan was adopted in October of 2009. Work on this plan, which is an update to that plan, proposing new initiatives for the city, began in September of 2017. A draft plan was finalized in May of 2018. So, all totaled, the working months that went into the first draft of that plan were about eight months. So, it was a very rapid plan implementation, or excuse me, plan development process. There was a steering committee that assisted in guiding that plan. That committee met five times. There were additional outreach to the public, including community workshops, discussion groups. Online paper surveys were also conducted, as well as onboard surveys with ART, City of Asheville Transit Riders. The steering committee consisted mostly of city staff, as well as individuals that are involved in the actual operations of their system. Additional members included citizens that represented interest groups, as well as other government agency representatives from our French Broad River MPO. Also, Buncombe County had a representative staff person. I served in that capacity as that process went on, again, with a five-meeting schedule that occurred over that eight-month period. In terms of Buncombe County's involvement, obviously I mentioned that I participated on the steering committee on behalf of the county. We, as, as a county, as staff, did not participate in the preparation of the request for proposals for this project. We didn't in any way define the scope of work or select the consulting firms or identify the work program. So, that was all handled by the city. They did ask for our participation as a representative. They also asked for the county to participate in a cost share of the plan because part of their original scope included the study of extensions of the service beyond city limits. So, there was a request for that, and the city, the county did participate in cost sharing in that. They did define and determine that amount of the cost sharing based on how much of the work of the consultants was focused on those extension efforts. And moving directly into the actual implementation schedule that the city will pursue, and what that really means for Buncombe County. So, a number of things will be impacted as the city moves into implementation of this particular plan. The first thing we think about are actual operations. Buncombe County operates Community Transportation Services Program, which is Mountain Mobility. Mountain Mobility operates Trailblazer routes that currently connect with city routes and offer transfers. So, there will be some impacts as their scheduling changes, as their potential routing changes with how our Trailblazer system will operate and interface with the city's system. ADA complimentary paratransit services, that's another big area. Buncombe County has a relationship with the city in that the city contracts with the county for the provision of its ADA complimentary paratransit services. So, the city actually purchases services from us that are complementary to the fixed route system they have. So, as the city expands routes, adds service hours, that directly impacts the operations of Mountain Mobility and also the payments made between the city and county and that relationship contractually between the city and the county. Obviously, that will have budgetary impacts. There will be other budgetary impacts that we'll touch on as we get to each of the separate implementation items that impact the county. In some cases, the Transit Master Plan is asking for or suggesting that the city would request funding from the county to support the cost of route extensions. And then also grant funding. So, as we modify our routes, the types of services that we're providing with the expansion of ADA, with the reduction potentially of Trailblazer services, if the grant funding will continue to be available, what kind of grant funding we may be able to access moving forward, again, as that implementation changes how we may operate. The plan does include an implementation schedule. It's more of a matrix, which we've broken down by year instead of looking at kind of this, this chart that spreads things out over a couple of years in certain cases. We're gonna take a look year by year at the actual implementation schedule and how that would impact us within a fiscal year constraint. So, the first year, implementation year one, would be FY 2020. The city has proposed a number of kind of first-year, kind of low-hanging fruit, things that they can do to get this plan implemented. They include combining some existing routes into crosstown routes so that folks can make it across town from west to east more easily. Those are the first two recommendations. Modifications to the Route 170 schedule, which operates on the eastern side of the county and serves Black Mountain area. That includes some expansion of service hours, slight modifications to the areas that that would serve. Some interlining of routes, increasing frequency of Route S4. The bigger areas are extension of service hours on Sundays and holidays, extending service hours on all routes for weekdays into later evening hours, and then expanding service to operate 365 days per year. And then also, in FY 2020, that the master plan suggests a fare-free weekend trial, meaning that all of the city system would operate as fare-free on Saturday and Sunday for the entire year of fiscal year 2020. There are a few of the actual route changes that will directly impact us, and I want to highlight a couple of those in terms of Mountain Mobility and its operations. The first, it's actually a combination with crosstown Route 2 and Route 170. And here, we're seeing some scheduling changes that we expect to happen as those are implemented. These scheduling changes will implement or impact our Inca Chandler Trailblazer, as well as the Black Mountain Trailblazer. What we expect there is that we're going to have some routing and scheduling changes for the Trailblazer operations. We would, obviously, any of those things happening would have administrative costs for us in terms of brochures and scheduling that we would have to update for Mountain Mobility operations. If we needed to possibly add additional connections to the ART service based on their scheduling, that could be operational cost increases for the county in terms of operating Mountain Mobility. Adding these additional runs, because the county contracts for operations with a third-party provider of services for Mountain Mobility, if we were to, to modify how we operate the Trailblazers, it's possible that our contractor could request a different rate for services. Trailblazer services require, for example, an operator with a CDL. Other services we provide do not. That's an additional cost. So, the contractor that we use may request revisions based on our changing of services. And then again, if we are identifying that we need to operate additional hours or additional service, we haven't identified any additional grant funding at this point that would cover those costs. There's another crosstown route. Again, this is in implementation year one. We cross town Route 4. This is a little bit of a different scenario in how it might impact the county. On the map before you is, it shows the existing W4 route, which goes out Leicester Highway, turns around on Old County Home Road, and then comes back into town. So, you can see here the city limits, and that's kind of where the route, as it stands, stops. There is a proposed extension to the route that would actually go further out New Leicester Highway, coming more proximate to Irwin Middle and High School and serving the Ingalls that is farther out Leicester Highway. This is the, again, the before, the existing route service, crosstown Route 4, with a possible extension into the county service area.
Is that still in the city limits?
The green route, once it extends beyond where the black stops, is inside the county.
Okay.
It's outside of the city limits there. I will say, just as a caveat, this routing is not finalized, so there could be adjustments to what the city would suggest. But this was a generalized idea that the master plan included.
To sort of bring in a lot of those apartments that have been built up there?
It would bring in apartments. It would come, again, close to the Irwin Middle School, which there has been some requests for some service out in the high school and middle school area, and also the commercial operations that are out there with Ingalls as well. So, in the Transit Master Plan, there is an actual cost that they've identified for that particular service to be extended of around $62,000 in that first year. And that, as the plan recommends, would be something that the city would request of the county because this would be for a service that goes beyond the city limits. The other piece of that, you know, to consider, and the city will be considering as they move forward, is an expansion of the route would mean an expansion of the ADA paratransit service area and possibly increased costs and operations for that particular service.
Could you, could you, could you repeat that? So, how does, you're saying if they expand the fixed route system, it's gonna expand the paratransit, but why is that the case?
Okay. So, fixed route services by requirement of the Federal Transit Administration. You have to provide ADA complimentary paratransit within a quarter-mile of the route. So, anytime you extend a route and you're not already covered in your, your service area, it actually creates a larger service area. The city has been very proactive in its application of the ADA paratransit service area. So, it includes all of the service area within a quarter-mile of any route, plus any city jurisdiction. So, they actually have a much larger ADA paratransit area than they're required to. But again, anytime they extend it beyond the existing city limits, you would have additional ADA service area.
Thank you.
And getting into more detail about the ADA complimentary paratransit, really here, the biggest issues in terms of Mountain Mobility as operating that service for the city would be, again, we're being asked to operate longer hours on Sundays and holidays, additional days of service, Thanksgiving and Christmas Day, which we've traditionally been closed on those days of service, expanded service areas, so we would anticipate a larger volume of trips. We would anticipate additional volume of service on the fare-free weekends as well because ADA complimentary paratransit service, which is charged at a rate of twice the regular fare, would become fare-free on Saturday and Sunday. So, we expect to see some trips shift from weekdays to when they would be a free service for a customer onto weekends. And we would expect to see additional trips taken on the weekend days as well. Again, for Buncombe County's consideration, we could see the contractor that operates the service request additional rate increase there because we're operating expanded hours of service in order to meet our contractual obligation to the city. We're operating on holidays where, again, they pay, you know, time and a half or additional time for operators to be there that wasn't considered in the initial terms of the contract. So, we could see some of that adjustment requested. Also, you know, as the service design changes, as we're carrying more ADA complimentary paratransit services, that requires a different level of service than some of the other services we provide. Again, using wheelchair lifts and other devices, they're more timely. So, there, there could be more considerations from the contractor to ask for a rate adjustment with us. That also in turn speaks to the fact that the county will probably need to reevaluate its current rates with the city as these things change in terms of what we charge the city as a contractual rate for the service we're providing them. The next two years of implementation are shown here on one slide. Not a lot of the implementation happening in year two really impacts the county directly. In year three, though, again, we see some proposed modifications that would have impacts on the county either as operationally or budgetarily. The first is to create an Inca Chandler route that would actually be provided by the ART system, and it would serve areas that are within the city limits that are not already served. So, there's an area that kind of extends beyond where city service stops that the city's proposing to, to extend into. And then the creation of a new route to Weaverville by the city via Broadway. So, the first map here shows the, the existing Inca Chandler Trailblazer route. So, we operate 11 different runs of service, meaning 11 different hours we operate out in the Inca Chandler area. We alternate between the portion that serves Sand Hill Road, Sardis on the south, and then the portion going north on Mona Vista. So, we're out in that area operating already. You can see that we are providing operations within the city limits in order to provide service to that community, but also to connect with the city of Asheville's W3 route, which will be renamed the crosstown route at the Goodwill on Patton Avenue. So, that's our connection, kind of in that upper right-hand corner. That's where we currently connect. The city is proposing an extension beyond that existing point at Goodwill on Patton to serve Sand Hill Road area and Sand Hill School Road. So, that is a proposed extension. It would, again, overlap service we're already providing in that area. So, again, this, the blue is showing where Mountain Mobility is operating service on weekdays, and the purple is the proposed extension by the city that would happen in implementation year three.
Did we recently go, didn't we recently go to the tickets were free?
Yes. So, Trailblazer service is a fare-free service at this point. So, that is another consideration that, that I think would be necessary to make as we move forward, depending on how the city is, is progressing with their services. If, you know, the city were to provide service and we were to stop providing service, it may go from being fare-free for a citizen to being a service with a fare.
Can you go back?
I was just curious, what kind of response you've seen to the, the fare-free?
So, the fare-free service has seen a positive response in terms of ridership. We've seen an uptick in ridership, which we would expect. I think the biggest benefit has been for the existing rider that's out there being able to utilize the service more frequently because there isn't a cost burden on them to do so. But it's been overwhelmingly positive. We've seen our connection points with the city go up because they're only then paying for one service and not both legs of the trip. So, it's been, it's been very positive.
Well, that's, that's great, Matt. Go ahead, Mr. Fur.
The one thing that I saw on the bus thing, this was years ago, they did a 90-day deal in the city. They tore up a lot of buses. It was fare-free, you know. Then the homeless people rode the buses all day, run half the people off. So... So, you know, you can only give so much away, and that's, you gotta back up. And right now, if you read the paper, the company that's running the system right now is not doing a very good job, because they're on the third person, you know, to try to keep the maintenance of the buses up, and they're not doing a very good job. They're down like three buses right now, so, you know, I think right now, talking about free rides, it's bad enough, but they don't have enough buses to do what they're doing. And this is Buncombe County, it's not the city of Buncombe. That's the way I look at it. We have our bus line that we fund each year, and I'm perfectly happy with that. That's where I'm at. We don't, you know, every time I turn around, it's the city wanting something. This building's not pink. This is Buncombe County. We have to look at Weaverville, give them up, give the city up. Black Mountain still pays the city to come to Black Mountain, so that goes through Swananoa. But, you know, then they get paid to go to Warren Wilson. They used to get paid, and I guess they probably still do, to go to AV Tech, or not AV Tech, but UNCA. But there's a group of people that put some of this stuff forward back when I was messing with the city, and it turned into a total disaster. So they took routes off of people in, over in Oakley, on the backroads that they used to ride, the backroads to pick people up. Now they gotta come all the way to Fairview Road to get on the buses. So the routing don't work, you know? I'm sorry. But that's something that I watched for a long time. But when you give stuff away, then you get all the homeless people, and we're getting plenty of them, and they want to ride in the summertime when it's cool, and they want to ride in the winter when it's warm. That's, that's a problem, and then running them on Saturdays and Sundays, you know, I look at the buses now, ain't nobody on them. You know, go, go, go ride one one day, look, see how many, see how many people see on them. This company that's running the city deal right now, it's not good. You know, if you're on your third person, you haven't been here, but just a little over a year, they run a guy off that had 40 years' experience running that deal. They run another one off that had 40 years' experience too, that was running it, the whole deal at one time. But the maintenance guy, they let him go, now they're, they've gone past three maintenance guys, they burned a bus here a while back, and the other buses, they've got three buses down right now that's, you know, the hybrids are quitting on them, and that's, that's not good, so, you know? We're talking about something in my eyes. Now, it's only my eyes, but I've seen it. I've, I've watched it. They put me on the board over there, but they canceled the board soon as they put me on, because they wanted one county person. Well, then they got rid of that deal pretty quick, because they was putting me on. But no, when you do free stuff, it costs a whole lot of money to be able to do it for free. A dollar, anybody should be able to pay a dollar. And if they can't get it to where you give them a ticket, but you just don't let them get on the bus and get off. And even our people, you know, right now, we're probably in decent shape, but Trailblazer's been around in Buncombe County for a long time. I want to see it stay, but I don't want to be in competition with the city. The city is the city. You know, it's not Weaverville, we're not joining with Weaverville, we're not joining with Black Mountain or Biltmore Forest or even Woodfin. Every time I turn around, I think we're in a pink building here. We're not. So that's where I'm at on this picture. This, far as I'm concerned, is a waste of time. Thank you for trying to present.
All right, thanks, Commissioner. So, I just had a question about this slide. The, so can you, can you just articulate a little bit more on the, what the proposed change is here? Is it that basically the route's staying the same or similar, and it's just that the city wants to run that route, which currently the county Trailblazer system serves that route? Am I understanding that right?
Correct. So the Trailblazer system is operating in that particular service area, and the city is proposing to extend and provide service where we're already providing a service on a portion of that route. So we actually, on the Inca Chandler Trailblazer, we go out as far as the TA truck stop and connect with Haywood County Transit as well. So it's a much lengthier route, so this is kind of that more in-town segment that the city is proposing to take on.
So from a, from a financial standpoint, just from a purely financial standpoint, from the county's perspective on that, is that a good thing or a bad thing in terms of, I mean, if they're taking over a service we're providing now, and they're going to pay for that, does that mean that that's going to save us money? Or is it revenue neutral, because they're contracting with us to serve that area? Or how does it all look from a, just a straight budget standpoint on that, like that example right there?
It's, it's an interesting situation, again, because we have a complicated relationship with the city in terms of the various ways in which we interact with our systems. So there would be some real costs. So if, for example, it's determined that the best avenue to pursue would be to not serve in the same area as the city and to modify our routing, it's really not going to make a huge cost savings for us. We would likely try to operate perhaps in a different area, running similar mileages. I don't know that we would expend any more or less.
So if the city extends their route to run those routes, one option might be, we just run overlapping services there, which is maybe somewhat inefficient, but also provides, in some ways, some more frequency of transit services in the area, so there's some benefits for the folks living there, that there's actually more service there now than there is now, right?
Right. And so you could have increased frequency, we could continue to operate. And this one's a little bit more complicated, and I'll jump ahead. So there are things that we could consider, you know, expanding, perhaps, we as the county would be considering at that point, expanding our service hours. This is a couple of years from now, or days of service, so that, you know, the need for that may not exist for the city. We could consider eliminating the portion of service that overlaps and reevaluating our service area that's already provided. Another thing, like I mentioned, is what the fare structures look like for both systems. You know, the citizens may have a vested interest in continuing having access to Trailblazers if that's a fare-free service, and now there's a new service, but that's at a fare cost to them. So there are a number of considerations. In this particular case, the city is not requesting any funding from the county, because the extension they're proposing would be wholly within the city limits. And in terms of the Inca Chandler Trailblazer route, that one has been in operation since 2007. So we've been operating that route for an extended period of time. That route performs fairly well in terms of ridership, but it doesn't have the kind of ridership volume you would expect to see on a city level of service, operating a full-size bus. So that's another consideration that I think the city may take into account as they move forward. And again, we provide that information on a regular basis to anyone who asks, so that they could get an idea of what kind of service volume they may expect by taking that service on. In this case, my understanding from conversations with city staff is it's more about an equity issue, and that there's an area that they are not currently serving with the city routes that is within their jurisdiction. So again, there are a number of options we can pursue, you know, as we move forward in that particular case.
Isn't the Trailblazers, don't they, they call in, or?
So the Trailblazers?
It's not like, you know, there's bus stops out there, they, they call in for that service, right?
So it's a deviated fixed route, and what we do is identify, so it operates kind of like a bus service, in that we run the same routes on a regular basis. We do have identified time points, so that, that folks know that they should expect us at the Goodwill on Patton Avenue at this time, but it's a flag-down service as well. So anyone along the route can flag down the bus, it's not at pre-marked, pre-marked stop locations for us as well, which would differ from how the city would operate. The other extension that's proposed in this particular implementation year is the Weaverville via Broadway route. The city did, in prior times, operate a route to Weaverville. Part of the establishment of the North Buncombe route that we serve with the Trailblazer was in order to accommodate citizens who needed access to transit service when the city discontinued that particular service. So here, in the blue, again, is the North Buncombe Trailblazer route, so this is the routing we're currently operating. Again, we vary service, we run eight different trips out in that area, so eight hours of service. Some go down Main Street, some go on the exterior portion, kind of in a loop pattern. The city, in this case, is proposing service to Weaverville via the Broadway route, so it would actually be a route out of Broadway that would go into Main Street and Weaverville. So you can see that in purple. So this is an extension. The black route is the existing N-1 route, which was within the city limits. In this case, again, they're proposing an extension that would go outside of the city limits. So here, it's kind of the same considerations. What does that look like for our routing of our Trailblazers? Things that would change in terms of how we would meet up, meet with the different routes from the city of Asheville, cost there. The transit master plan in this case suggests that the city would, would likely request $257,000 from the county, an additional $121,000 from Weaverville to support this route extension. Other considerations, similar, again, with ADA complimentary paratransit service area expanding, and what that impact looks like for the county, the city, and mountain mobility operations. Again, it would be a similar reaction to an extension in the Inca Chandler area of, do we modify our existing routing? Do we eliminate it? Is there a duplication that's occurring there? What do fare structures look like? How does this impact our grant funding streams in both cases? So again, a lot of these are, are different things happening in different parts of the county, but some of the impacts are fairly similar and broad-reaching. The next several years, there's additional implementation the city is proposing, doesn't really impact us in terms of extensions into the county, doesn't really impact us in terms of additional funding requests. Those were the initial pieces of, of the, the plan. The portion that, again, the, the city requested county participation on the steering committee, county participation in the funding, were to study extensions into the county specifically. Again, the city identified what areas they felt needed to be studied, including Weaverville and Woodfin, Irwin, Inca Chandler, Reynolds, Shiloh, Beaver Dam, and Fairview. In these cases, as we've discussed, there were a number of actual city-proposed extensions of service to serve some of these communities. In several cases, the plan itself didn't recommend any modification, extension, new service, any kind of routing for those. One community, there was a recommendation for either a limited fixed route service or flex route service, and that was for the Reynolds community. Specifically, it's noted in the plan that fixed route service is not recommended to serve the Reynolds community. I know that there have been requests from the community for transit service. This plan does not call for fixed route service. It did suggest that a limited fixed route service in morning and evening hours should be considered, or a flex route, which would be kind of like a deviated fixed route that we operate with our Trailblazers, being considered as well. The transit master plan did not include any kind of timeframe about the implementation of this particular project. And in conversations with city staff, they've indicated they do not intend to pursue any kind of service on this corridor outside of county participation. The city in the master plan did suggest they would request an additional $318,000 from the county to support the extension of this particular route to serve this Reynolds community. And again, we would have to think about how this would impact the ADA complimentary paratransit service area. So here we have the existing routing of S-5, which comes this close to the Reynolds community at this point. And this is the proposed Reynolds flex route, which was included in the master plan, that would go out and provide service in this area. So a large portion is still within the city limits to make that connection with the existing S-4 route. The routing is not precisely determined, but these are estimates and projections by the city for that particular service. I think, again, as I said, this is going to raise a lot of questions, a lot of things that the, the board will be considering in the coming months and in the coming years. Most of them have to do with our existing mountain mobility service, how we respond with our routing of our Trailblazers, how we, you know, do we consider expanding our services? Does the city want to participate in cost sharing for us to provide more robust services? So that, that, you know, in Inca Chandler, perhaps, they want us to run longer hours and agree to share in that cost, perhaps, to cover that area of service for the city? And how that impacts grant funding? So if we're losing ridership, are we going to be able to sustain the grant funding we have? Because we're modifying routes, and we're not seeing that same volume of ridership. The ADA complimentary paratransit service, this is another big area, how we address this service volume growth. Is it going to impact our rates with our contractor for the current provision of service? Do we need to modify the rates that we're billing the city with? The budget considerations, and I put this table in, and I'm going to give you several caveats on it. So the first-year figures that you see there are the ones that were listed in the transit master plan, they're variable, I couldn't exactly and precisely identify how they arrived at those. They weren't necessarily exactly in line with what I was familiar with, with the existing contract rates the city is paying for its provider of service, which is how I would imagine they would have arrived at those, those values. But we did look at both the transit master plan's projections for increased cost, as well as what we were able to see in the city's existing contract rates. And basically, projecting a 5% increase was an average between those. So, you know, if, if the county were interested in participating in the crosstown route in 2020, this, the cost would be, based on the TMP, around $62,000, and that cost would steadily increase over time. We also included the Weaverville route, potential request from the city to the county with implementation year 2022, understanding that we would assume that the, the master plan was suggesting that's the day, the year, that's when that cost would begin. The flex route, again, didn't have any particular year, so we just provided those as kind of across-the-board pieces of information about, you know, the potential that the city may look for partnership on in terms of budget participation. The other big consideration, that's one that I haven't touched on yet, is Section 5307 program funds. So Buncombe County now has access to a Section 5307 program funds as a subrecipient of the city of Asheville. And so as the county is urbanizing, Buncombe County, by its provision of services with mountain mobility, actually earns the region federal transit dollars in 5307 funds. And so, in prior years, Buncombe County didn't have access to those funds, and we, and starting in federal fiscal year 16, now have access to that. The MPO led the suballocation formula study, and that has been implemented. And so, outlined in the, in the slide are the amounts of funds from Section 5307 that the county has access to, to utilize. So there are a number of things that the county could possibly do with those funds, they are constrained in how we can use them, we may not be able to use them all in the first few years. It's possible that we could work with the city to offset some of these costs for extensions by relinquishing our access to those funds. There are a number of things that I think that, you know, if it is of interest to the board to support an extension into the county, that we could be creative in terms of, perhaps not accessing grant funding and allowing the city to retain it. So there are things that we can do, you know, depending on the will of the board, in those areas. So again, I just draw that as, as a piece of information as we move forward.
Could you share a little bit about the timetable or the process surrounding those funds?
So, it's interesting, and in my previous experience, I actually worked for Henderson County and was a subrecipient of these 5307 funds for Henderson County. And so you can see in federal fiscal year 16, which we are in, our current fiscal year 19, the county had access to $264,000. The city has not yet applied for the funds from federal fiscal year 16 for us, even though we've included them in the budget, and, and they understand we intend to use them in FY19 in a limited capacity. And so the process really is dependent largely on how the city proceeds with their application process. We want to be in a position of operating a few fiscal years behind the federal, because it's often released late, their years run different than ours, so it puts us in a good position to be running behind in terms of drawing down funds. But that process is wholly dependent on the city proceeding with an application, once we've identified how we would like to utilize the funds. And you can see, and I included this here as a piece of information as well, in our fiscal year 19 budget, we did include some funding of 5307 funds for use to offset fuel costs. We've never had grant funding to do that, and we can use it in a limited, limited capacity for the service we're providing within the urbanized area. So we can, can use that funding. The city, I believe, I understand, will be completing the application process in December, so hopefully the funds will release to us by May.
Okay. You said something early in this, how much money did we give the city to look at this originally?
And I do have those figures. The original amount was around $7,600. The total plan cost, I understand from the city, was $115,000 for the, the total.
Who approved that? Who approved that?
I don't know the exact history of that approval.
I'd like to know it.
My understanding of that was that was an agreement between the county manager Green and assistant county manager John Creighton at the time.
Okay. Here's your answer.
All right.
We've gone through a few of them already, so.
All right. Matt, do you have a little bit more on your presentation?
I just included here in the last slide the link where you can access all the existing master plan documents. We felt it was important as staff to kind of try to boil this down into what really is going to impact Buncombe County in terms of potentially what will be requested, potentially what we may have to address. Even, you know, if the county chooses not to respond in any way, if the city modifies its routes, it's definitely still going to have impacts on how we operate. So we felt it would be in our best interest to kind of get ahead of that, at least share with the board what information we knew at this point. And then, as I said, over the coming months and years, work through any decisions that may need to be made.
The way I look at this, I'm probably speaking out of turn again, and it's just me. Weaverville got away from this. Now you're talking, asking them for another $130,000. They backed away from the City of Asheville. You know, it's like I said, the only thing they got is Black Mountain. So, you know, you're trying to put something, you're trying to put the county in the city. That's all you talk about, City of Asheville. And, you know, I work for Buncombe County. You work for Buncombe County. And we have a bus system, and we need to try to make it the best we possibly can. That's what my prerogative is, make our system the best we can. If they want to go do something, they're the one that goes to federal government. They're a municipality. We are a county. They're just a part of our county. So they don't run us, and we don't run them. So we have to give them money, they have to give us a percentage of money. So, but me personally, I've seen what happened to Asheville Bus System over amount of years, and it's not good. So I don't care what kind of plan they put together. The last plan they put together was a disaster. Now we're going for it again. They want more territory. They got away the airport. Guess what beats them out there? You said you worked for Hendersonville. The little bus system from Hendersonville meets them at the airport. Okay, so let's just keep what we have without talking hundreds of thousands of dollars moving from here to there to let them do this or do that. I want our people to have what they need out in the county. And as long as we have Trailblazer, it should work, because that's like I said, you got to go look at the buses, even in the city. There's not that many people on them. So, you know, what's expansion going to do for them? Just cost us money. That's all it's going to do. So I'm 150% against this, anyway it's brought forward. That's just me.
Rodney?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something here. Thanks, Matt. You know, when I look at the plan, I think it's great that you're talking about the City of Asheville and Buncombe County coming together, because ideally, when you look at efficiencies and all, it would be great, you know, for us to work together so we don't duplicate any services. But when I look at this plan, I sort of lean like to Commissioner Fryer's view in one respect. I see us putting a lot of money in this over the years, but I don't see the services getting to the people in the county who really need the services. Now, you know, I can see us doing a plan, but we've got to have more input in it, and we've got to be represented at the table so that we're getting something out of it. You know, maybe I'm just a simple-minded country boy, but, you know, I've always looked at things if, you know, if I'm going to put out my money, I want to get something out of it. And as a taxpayer, I have some serious concerns when I look at this county. You know, we have squandered enough of the taxpayers' money as it is. I don't want to see us do or put any more into something that, when I look at this, I don't see us getting anything out of it.
So I'm going to agree with Commissioner Whiteside on it. I appreciate the information, and unless I'm looking at it along the only thing that I see that actually extends into the county that is not a duplicated run is the little short run in Lester. Am I looking at it pretty?
Correct. Yeah. And it's, okay. But I think it's important for us to know what their plans are and how it relates to us so that we can have a good discussion. I don't see any cost benefits to the county. I am concerned about the Trailblazer. That's a really great system, and when you overlap it, though they can do what they want to, because, I mean, if they extend the city, you know, out to the city limits, which is what they're wanting to do in Inca Candler, then, you know, I guess we could change our routes so that we still provide the same services. But that is a, explain why we went to that being zero cost.
And so in terms of our Trailblazer service and decision to go fare free, we had experienced, like many systems have across the United States, an actual loss in ridership. As the economy improved, and we were experiencing declining ridership, the city in the last several years had reduced the number of connection points it made with our Trailblazer system, making that a less effective option. We also face competition from other services that didn't exist several years ago, like Uber and Lyft. It's kind of all come together at the same time. And so, you know, our decision was, one, so we do have, you know, grant funding support for that, and we definitely don't want to jeopardize it. And one of the ways that you justify your services is by your ridership and making decisions to go fare free. In that particular case, one, increase our ridership, and two, the revenue streams based on the existing fare structure were so insignificant, it actually likely cost us more in our contract to collect the fares and count them than we were actually collecting in the fares. And so that decision, you know, was made. And we had concerns, much like Commissioner Fryer had expressed, about, well, what if we have demand that exceeds our current capacity? You can have the need to run additional buses. And so we looked at that, our existing capacities, we're not having or experiencing any of those kind of issues with our service with going fare free. And it's been a really positive result for our ridership on Trailblazer service.
All right. Well, so there's no decisions we have to make tonight. This is a lot of great data. So thank you, Matt, for presenting it. Are there other questions or comments from commissioners at this time? You know, I would, I'm going to just make a couple of comments. One is, you know, part of what I like about this is there are some specific ideas on the table, because people come to, I don't know, me sometimes, I'm sure other commissioners, and say, what's the county going to do about transit? You know, and so I oftentimes ask back, well, what is your specific idea? And people sometimes have ideas about, let's go out to this school, or let's go over to this school, and maybe those are good ideas. But, you know, I think transit is a very important service. It's also, it is a very costly service to provide. So I think that whatever we do, we need to have some really good, we need to have a good planning process, and we need to have some really good data to base our decisions on, because we're, you know, the reality is that once you do get outside the city limits, you know, we're a big county, and we're mostly a rural county, where providing, you know, fixed route transit is not, you know, that's not realistic for most places for, you know, the foreseeable future. So we need to be really strategic in how we do this. We need to be very targeted in how we do this. And I think there are some specific ideas here. I'm certainly not endorsing, you know, all of them, but I think there are some things here to look at. You know, the one on the service, the proposed service expansion on Lester Road, that is an area, I'm sure everybody's probably pretty familiar with that, where the, it goes outside the city limits, and it's a very, it's outside the city limits, but it's a very built-up area. There's a ton of new apartments, there's grocery stores there. So extending transit services beyond where the city stops serving because it's outside the city limits, you know, I think that's probably a really good idea. And it's actually, you know, it's not a giant budget buster to consider that. So I think that's a great idea to look at, and I think we should look at these others as well. But if, and I'm glad that, I'm glad that the county had an opportunity to have someone on the planning process for, you know, the city master plan. If we want to invest in doing our own transit planning, that's something we should, you know, we should talk about, because the city's process was absolutely focused on what happens in the city limits. That's what the city council's rightly focused on, but it's, as our area urbanizes, we're going to need to think about how the city system and the county system can most effectively be coordinated. So, anyway, look forward to continuing the discussion. Any other initial thoughts or comments back while we're on this item?
And I don't have a problem with looking at all the information. I just want to make sure that we're not jeopardizing Trailblazer, we're not jeopardizing some of these good systems that are out there now, that we're realistically looking at extending a service into the county and benefiting the county, which is, I think, what that Lester loop does. I don't, I mean, I'm, based on what I saw there, it does, but, you know, I'm not interested in propping up the city's transit system. And I don't think we, I don't think that's what this is about. I think it's just, and I'm not sure why they're looking at extending the bus service out to the city limit in Inca Candler now.
No, that was all within the city limits.
Yeah, I know, it's within the city limits. And I've always wondered why it didn't run out there anyhow, because it was in the city limits when I was before. Yeah, it's money. Yeah, it's money. So, and so now the issue is that if they extend it out there, it overlaps our Trailblazer, and that makes it complicated.
Well, here's, and I don't have a position on this, but here's the only, I mean, on a high level, I mean, I think one question that, I don't know, Matt, do you have any initial thoughts on this just conceptually? But, I mean, I think the Trailblazer system is great, does a great job, but, I mean, part of the reality in the region is that what a lot of people who need transit for is to get to work, you know, from their home to work and back home again, right? So, and there are a lot of jobs in the city, a lot of people every day go from outside the city into the city to work, and they need to go home. So, I guess I just would say that, I mean, I think we need to be open-minded to what meets people's needs the best. I mean, the idea of like taking, if you have to take a Trailblazer route and then take a city route to get to work, and you have to, you know, change routes, I mean, that's kind of a hassle, right? So if there's more kind of direct connections in the region, I think we need to be open to what's the most efficient way to do that with the customer in mind, you know, and if that's all Trailblazer, great. If it's something with the city, I think we should just be open to what works best for, you know, the people.
The Trailblazer goes all the way to the county line, so, I mean, it's a great service. And I know they use it for doctor visits, they use it for a lot of things. And maybe we need to measure that and look at some of those things, but, you know.
The other item, I will take the opportunity to mention, and I think it coincides well with kind of the discussion that the board is having now, is that the county does participate in its own transportation planning process. So we have a coordinated transportation services plan that is basically a five-year vision. We do a shorter-term vision. That's in cooperation with the state because they're a major grant funding partner. And so that process is scheduled to occur again in 2020. So we will have a planning initiative of our own that's running at that point, and we will certainly keep, you know, the board aware of that. It involves citizen input, it involves analysis, so they'll revisit things. You know, our initial plan from 2015 did not suggest any kind of new deviated fixed route service, new Trailblazer service. But it's possible that our new 2020 plan may identify an area that's appropriate for it. And so we have our own planning processes that go on in terms of the service that the county provides. As I said, we were invited to participate. You know, I don't want the board to perceive this as any kind of endorsement of the plan. It's really an informational item so that you're aware of what you may see coming down the pipe.
All right. Matt, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Look forward to talking further. Okay, we've got two public hearings. The first one is a zoning ordinance amendment, and Josh Freeman's going to present both of these items, first for the brake and then for the hail property, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, I just wanted to take an opportunity. Nathan Pennington, for those of you who don't know him, your planning director. Josh Freeman is our new zoning administrator. Debbie Trumpy, who many of you have known, retired on Friday. So Josh is now coming to us. He's got a lot of experience. He's worked for Teague Engineering as well as the City of Brevard. He's a certified planner as well as a fellow certified floodplain manager. I just wanted to take a second to introduce him, and he's here to present both of the rezonings tonight. Thank you.
Welcome, Josh.
Thank you all. Pleasure to be here. Max, if you could pull up the presentation, please. So the first public hearing before you tonight is under, planning department terms, is zoning public hearing 2018-43. It's the Brake Zoning Map Amendment. I just want to state for the record, for the benefit of the clerk, that the public hearing was properly advertised and notice given in accordance with the general statutes and Buncombe County Code. I have documentation to that effect that I can present to you later. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider a proposed map amendment to the official zoning map of Buncombe County. Just a reminder, most, I believe the board is probably aware of this, for the public's benefit, zoning map amendments are not project-specific or land-use-specific. The applicant cannot propose, and the county cannot consider a particular development concept or plan for site development. Rather, zoning map amendment is, if it's approved, it creates a potential for any land use that's allowable in the proposed district to be constructed or at least proposed for construction on the subject property. The applicant is John Brake, who's here tonight. He is executor and trustee on behalf of Ruth Brake, who is deceased, and he does have legal counsel with him tonight, who will also make a presentation after I've completed mine. Property is located on Tunnel Road, US Highway 70, at the intersection of Tunnel Road and Robert Clayton Drive. If you're looking at the map on the screen, and let me zoom in a little closer here. All right, Nate? There we go. Thank you. Robert Clayton Drive is located due east of the subject property, which is highlighted on the map in yellow. And then there's an apartment complex that I'll address in a moment, which is, again, to the east as well. The property in question is .99 acres in size. Current land use is vacant. Currently zoned R2 residential. Proposed zoning district is employment. So R2 is a low to medium-density residential district. Employment is kind of a mixed-use commercial district that allows a broad range of uses as well as some light industrial uses. The property abuts R2 zoning. Let me move to the next slide. Max, can you move me forward two slides? Thank you, sir. The property abuts R2 zoning and low to medium-density residential uses on the east, north, and west boundaries, which includes Holly Tree Apartment Complex, which is on this map to the upper right in between the commercial service zoning in red and the subject property, which is hatched in blue. It abuts EMP zoning or employment zoning, as well as commercial and industrial land uses to the south across US Highway 70 and south of the Norfolk Southern Rail Line. It's separated on the same side of the road, on the north side of Tunnel Road, by, from existing commercial zoning, specifically EMP, to the west and commercial service to the east, in both cases by a distance of about 300 feet. Plan consistency is an important consideration in any rezoning. The board commissioners must adopt a plan consistency statement to approve this rezoning. A draft of a consistency statement has been provided to you in your packets. We hit some of the high points in terms of plan consistency, and this is staff's perspective here. The subject property is located on an identified major transportation corridor within a combined water and sewer service area. It's outside of a steep slope area. It's outside of a high elevation area. It's outside of an area of higher moderate slope stability, and it's outside of the special flood hazard area. Those points argue, are offered by the 2013 Comprehensive Plan as arguments in favor of the application. It's not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan with respect to its separation from low-density residential uses. I will say that what is low, what is medium-density, what is high-density is somewhat of a matter of perspective, but it's staff's perspective that it is not separated from low-density residential uses. Staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed amendment on the basis that it's generally consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Plan. I believe your planning board supported the recommendation, offered you a favorable recommendation as well. I believe the vote was five to one, and I can verify that if you need. Options before you tonight would be to approve the proposed rezoning as presented or deny the rezoning as presented. Take any questions.
There's no initial, are there any initial questions? Okay. Let's open the public hearing.
Max, if you could pull up Mr. Oss's presentation. Max, if you could pull up Mr. Oost's presentation, please, sir.
Oh, do you want to go ahead and present now? Let's do that. Mr. Oost, come on up. Sure. Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry. I was gonna open the public hearing, but, of course, you're welcome to present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board of commissioners. My name is Bob Oost, I'm an attorney with the law firm McGuire Wouldn't Bissett. I'm here representing John Robert Brake, who's here. He's got a bit of a problem with laryngitis, all I'll be doing is talking for him. I've been through this presentation, I think I can get it done in about three minutes, but if I do run over, I'm taking his time. It's, I want to thank Mr. Freeman and Mr. Pennington for their work on the staff report and presentation. I'll be as brief as I can. The property in question is slightly less than one full acre, it's roughly rectangular, and with its long side, which is about 250 feet, fronting directly on Tunnel Road, which is also known as US 70, four-lane road, used to be the only way out of town. There are commercial uses across the road, which is, as Mr. Freeman pointed out, is zoned employment. Then, on the other side of those uses is the railroad track, followed by I-40. There are commercial uses nearby in both directions, and the following photos will characterize the area. Let me see if I can get this to work. Max, would you advance the slide? There we go. What you see here is, looking west from the subject property, of course, you see Tunnel Road there.
Mr. Oost, I just need to pause for just a minute. I want to just ask a point of order from Ms. Hockaday. Should Mr. Oost's presentation be part of the public hearing?
Generally, yes, because he's not on the agenda as a presenter.
Yeah. Mr. Oost, I think we should open the public hearing, and then we're gonna let you continue your presentation, okay? All right. So, we're gonna open the public hearing at 6:36 PM. I don't believe we're gonna be able to give you more than three minutes, but we'll start the clock now, since we're just now opening the public hearing, okay?
Thank you. And I will try and get this done in three minutes. I do have a handout for the board, let me hand this up.
Okay. We'll wait till, start the clock until you've gone back up to the podium.
So, and the handout roughly follows the PowerPoint presentation I have here. What you see here is looking west along Tunnel Road, you can see a commercial, a manufacturing facility there on the slide, on the right-hand side, which is just on the other side of Jim's Branch Road. Next slide. This is looking directly across the street, directly across Tunnel Road from the property. There's a commercial use, you can see I-40 there in the background. I will remark that when I was out there, which was yesterday, the traffic noise from I-40 was pretty noticeable. This is looking east, looking east from the subject property, you can see the zoning sign there. The paneling world is up on the hill, just on the other side of that telephone pole. Basically, what you have out here is a patchwork of commercial, manufacturing, and residential uses along the north side of US 70, from Asheville to Black Mountain. The south side is dominated by the railroad track and I-40, but where it is wide enough, like here, it's commercial. As Mr. Freeman pointed out, when this rezoning request is evaluated against the criteria and the county's own plan, it meets every one of the marks. And I would disagree with the planning staff slightly, because I think the surrounding residential uses are medium-density, and in some cases, high-density. It's an apartment building located right, two apartments located right in back of the property, and to the east is a fairly densely developed residential subdivision. I would argue those are medium-density and not low-density. But, the, in addition to the use limitations that come along with the use available, the employment zoning classification, the, there are some other dimensional requirements that affect the potential development size. The lot's approximately just over 40,000 feet, 250 feet of frontage, but it is an irregular shape, and in the EMP zoning classification, the front and rear yards are 20 feet, it's a 20-foot setback, side yards are 10 feet. These factors limit the size of the structure that can go there. There are other limitations, including, which are intended to mitigate the impact of whatever use goes there, including the requirement for a 15-foot vegetative buffer between the use, any commercial use and the adjacent residential uses. Off-street parking is required, and the parking lot is required to be landscaped. There are some site constraints that sort of differentiate this property from other property, or from a piece of flat land. Number one, there are three right-of-ways along the western side of the property, which limit the development potential for that part of the property. If you look at the property on a map, it's kind of narrow in the middle. All these combined to impact the impact on the adjacent property. We'd appreciate that the planning board and the planning staff recommend in favor of this rezoning, and that's what we'd support.
Thank you so much.
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Great. All right. Anyone else like to comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 6:40. Bring it back to the board. Any questions for the staff or the applicant? Or is there a motion? We're gonna need two motions. The first is gonna be finding that either the plan is consistent with the county's land use plan or inconsistent. So, first, we need a consistency finding, and then, if it's found to be consistent, we'll need a second vote to actually amend the official zoning map.
So, I will make a motion that it is consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan reasonable and in the public interest.
Okay, there's a motion that the request is consistent with the Buncombe County land use plan? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We also could consider a motion to amend the official zoning map of Buncombe County as requested.
I move that we amend the county zoning map as requested.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are we ready to move on to the next one?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go.
Okay. Wasn't sure.
People come in and out, we just.
Yeah. Okay. Second public hearing of the evening, zoning public hearing 2018-44. This is the Hale zoning map amendment. Again, I'll state for the record that this public hearing was properly advertised, and we have documentation to that effect. Again, just a brief, I'm not gonna repeat myself too much, but just to remind the public and the board that zoning map amendments are not project-specific, we consider all the uses available in the district being proposed. The applicant is Mr. Jesse Gardner of Civil Design Concepts, and he is here tonight, and he is the applicant on behalf of Peter and Sarah Hale, who are the property owners. The address of the property is 38 Dry Ferry Road, just off of North Carolina Highway 191, Brevard Road, 1.9 acres in size. Currently, there is a single-family residence on the property, currently zoned R3 residential. Proposed zoning is commercial service, or CS. It abuts, let me, we'll flip to the next slide, sir. One more. Thanks, sir. The property currently abuts R3 zoning along its northern and southern boundaries, along its eastern and western boundaries, it abuts commercial service. Adjacent land uses are low-density residential to the north and south, vacant land uses to the east, and commercial land uses specifically an automobile dealership to the west. In terms of plan consistency, again, you'll need to adopt a consistency statement if you choose to approve. In terms of staff's analysis of the Comprehensive Plan, we find that it is consistent in the following ways. It's located within the combined water and sewer service area, it's not within a steep-slope environment, not within a high-elevation environment, not within a higher moderate-slope-stability environment, and it's not located within the special flood hazard area. In terms of any inconsistent elements, it is not separated from low-density residential land uses, and it's not directly on an identified major transportation corridor. I will say, however, that it's within 200 feet of Highway 191, and it's also abutting Dry Ferry Road, which is an NC DOT-maintained road. Staff's recommendation and the planning board's recommendation is to approve. Planning board's recommendation was unanimous vote. As previously mentioned, you have the option of approving tonight as presented, or denying the application as presented. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Let's open the public hearing at 6:44 PM. Are there any members of the public who'd like to talk to us about the request? And please share your name and where you live.
Yep, I'm Jesse Gardner, I'm the actual applicant, and want to thank Mr. Pennington and Mr. Freeman for shepherding us through this process. Also represent Joe Seagrave, who's owner of the Benchmark Auto. He employs about 40 people here in Buncombe County with his business, and this is an opportunity for him to secure some property around him for future growth of the business. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, but I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. And we, you know, full support from staff and the planning board, and I ask that the board follows it.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 6:45.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that it is consistent with county comprehensive land use plan reasonable and in the public interest.
All right, there's a motion, is there, in a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance amending the official zoning map of Buncombe County to support the request? Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We come to new business. Let's go ahead and take up the item that was removed from the consent agenda first, which is the housing item, and, Mr. Fryer, you requested this to come off the agenda. Could you share with us what you're, looking for a little more information, or do you have a specific question before we take this up?
Well, you know, here we got $600,000 worth of money that's going out to different areas. Some of them get some, some of them don't, and it's basically for repair of homes. Well, I know one person that we thought we was gonna get some repair on a home through Mountain Housing, and they pretty well told the person, basically, his house wasn't worth doing anything, too, so, you know, it, that's not called repairing, that's called turning down. And that, you know, they're, it's actually out of 300,000, they're getting 200 and some odd thousand dollars of money. Then you have Habitat that asks for basically, um, emergency repairs, 75, they got nothing. You got Mountain Housing asked for 300, and they got 263. You know, supposedly gonna fix 55 homes, and it turns into 48 supposedly, but, you know, I want to see some paperwork for what these people do, you know? We're giving them money, I don't know where it's going. I don't see it going into homes, I don't see it going into, you know, fixing people's properties, or older people's properties. That's a problem I have. And, you know, until they start showing me where this money's at, that they're two, that we're gonna let them have 263,000 out of 300,000, that's less than $40,000 from the true number. Then you got, you know, a couple of more that's getting zero. Eblin's getting zero. So is Ashville Area Habitat.
Well, they're getting, they're getting 240,000. They're getting 240,000.
Huh?
Habitat's getting 240,000, isn't that right?
So, where am I missing that list?
Uh, there's an exhibit, Exhibit A.
There it is. And, yes, I agree, they're getting 240,000, but that's Old Haywood Road, single-family ownership, emergency repairs, that's what I'm looking at, Brian.
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we have the staff kind of give us a short presentation about the recommendations and how, the process you went through to consider applications, and just tell us a little bit about the recommended funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members, and members of the public. I'm Nathan Pennington, we have a subject matter expert here, and both Donna Cotrell and Cynthia Fox-Clark. We just want to kind of preface this, that we brought to you in October the structure of the Affordable Housing Services Program, and our focus area this year was on emergency repair, and we had the public hearing in October, and we promised you that we would bring back, this is part of a competitive process, the application system, and Donna will be here to explain that. And we also have representatives here from Habitat for Humanity, MHO, for any questions you might have them, as well as Kirk Booth. So, I'm gonna let her sort of explain the scoring, how we got to the numbers that are being presented to you tonight, and then we'll be here to summarize as well.
Okay. And I will ask someone from Mountain Housing to say a few words about the emergency home repair program, too, since that question's been asked.
Okay, and Max, we do have a short presentation. Okay, great. So, the resolution before you tonight is requesting board approval for staff recommendations for the FY19 Affordable Housing Services Program. It actually began in 2004, and it was set up by the board. So, the next slide, please. So, just to remind you of the goals, it's to increase the stock of affordable housing, preserve existing housing stock, reduce substandard housing, and support homeownership initiatives such as Down Payment Assistance Program. The next one. So, this year, we brought to you some changes that we actually did to the application. One of those is that there was money that was moved via budget amendment to, from strategic partnership programs to the Affordable Housing Services Program for emergency repair. So, that was one change. The next change was for the score sheet, not yet, go back, for the score sheet. We made it more equitable for emergency repair and rental and single-family home construction, because not every part of the spread, the checklist applied to everything, so it made it more equitable. And the last thing we did was, we were able to update the income limits and the HUD purchase price. So, before, go ahead, the next one. Before I talk to you about the recommendations, I want to talk to you a little bit about the process. So, on October the 7th, we advertised for agencies to apply for funding via the website and filling out the application, and so the ad went out on October the 7th, we sent out emails, we sent out letters requesting that applications come in for the eligible activities. We received those, those were due October the 26th. We got those in, and you'll see that in your sheet, the people that applied, and staff scored those, and so these are the recommendations we come to you with tonight. The first is for Buncombe County employee assistance. Lately, we've had, we have a little bit of funding from past year's approval, but we needed at least to be able to do one more. And we do have representatives from the agencies that we've asked, that we're recommending funding for. The first is Mountain Housing Opportunities, and I'll ask their representative to come up and talk about their emergency repair program.
Before they come up, from a staff perspective, I mean, you scored these, we'd like to, I'm sure people would appreciate hearing your perspective about that program and why, how it scored well, and do they repair people's homes?
They do repair people's homes, and they've done it for us for years, and done it really well. They, historically, the limit has been $5,000. The board, a few years ago, raised that to 15,000. The board, a few years ago, raised that to 15,000 in situations where there was a need, where there was a roof and a septic, or electrical and a heat pump. There were times when if they needed a heat pump, and they had a hole in their roof, you had, I mean, you had to pick or do one and hope that they could get the other from somewhere else. So with 15,000, you know, they were able to do those in those circumstances. So, I mean, anytime Mountain Housing has told us how many homes they would do, the average comes out to be like about $5,400 a house, but they always do more than they tell us they're going to do, always. You know, you can't totally rehab a house for 15,000. And so, yes, from a, and, you know, we have backup, we have, I mean, the planning department is full of files where we've, where we've helped people. And we also, in my office, I have a stack of thank you notes, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, do folks feel like we need to hear from the organization? Or, I mean, I think I'm fine with, I'm comfortable with the staff's evaluation. I'm sure, I hear nothing but positive things. I don't need to hear more do other people?
Well, so, let me, I'll just make a couple comments, you know, and I'm laying in the middle because I typically do. But we're saying 600,000, what I'm looking at some here, no, I'm not, I got to move it over. There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's $600,000. I think where we have a problem, where I have a problem, some others, some may, is where you have $300,000 going to, going to an agency, and you tell us about the results, and you tell us about the thank you cards and all that, and we don't see any of that. Okay? And so, you know, I've heard it say, said before, it's New Day in Buncombe County, and I believe that. I believe that it's okay to ask the questions and for us to want to know, even though these are great agencies, we want to see the results. I think if we see the results, then people can feel better about, about the amounts. It's not an issue of trust, it's not an issue of how, you know, great a job, you know, y'all do or they do. I think it's just a matter of when you see a $300,000 amount, how many homes does that affect? How many homes has it affected? You know, and, and what has it been able to do? And I don't disagree with you, $15,000 doesn't go a long way anymore, but on some houses, it can go a long ways. Commissioner Beach Farrar and I visited quite a few homes where $1,500 a house would go a long way. Would you not agree with that, Ms. Farrar? We did. And a little, I keep forgetting what it's called, Co-op?
Is that what it's called?
Yeah. Yeah, they am a Co-op. And so, and I think it's a matter of, we want to do this, and we want to affect as many homes as possible. And if it's a home that's, you know, only worth $30,000, $2,000 goes a long way. And I mean, and some, you know, folks out there, you know, you may get a little glassy-eyed when I talk about a house that is $30,000, but there's $30,000 houses out there in Buncombe County, little bitty, small houses, that we can, we can make a big difference for families. So I think if we just had more detail on it, probably, you know, and see some of the results of it, it'd probably be a, be a.
Well, I do want to be clear, I hope I didn't misstate it, but $5,000 makes a huge difference in a lot of people's lives, and that is not lost on me. My point was, 15,000 will not completely rehab a house.
Oh, I got you. Right. I know.
Can I hear?
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I agree with many of the things you said, Commissioner Belcher. I had the chance, a couple of us were in the room last year to get a presentation from MHO about this program specifically, that was accompanied by actually photos of, sort of before and after photos of many of the homes that have been fixed.
Was that the same, weren't they going through somebody else, though? Wasn't there another name?
You may be thinking of the, there's also, I mean, there's a number of organizations that do work.
Yeah, I am.
The, there's the Energy Savers Network, which is specifically kind of focused on energy efficiency improvements, and they have kind of a volunteer model. And it's, it's great, too. So there's a number of groups that kind of do, they each have a different emphasis, maybe, but all, you know, help people try to be able to stay in their home.
Because I was really impressed by that, if it's the same group I'm thinking of, you know, and we were getting a lot of, you know, a lot of work done for very low money because it was, I think it's probably mostly volunteer or all volunteer. And great, and great laborers, so.
And I, and just my understanding of the basic distinction there is that the MHO program is really focused a lot on like life safety, right?
Life safety issues, yes.
Like things that could hurt you or kill you in your house, or which will cause the house to completely fail.
Yes, yes.
So it's preservation of the housing stocks, life safety issues.
Yes.
Energy Savers Network is real focused on things we can do to kind of weatherize people's homes using a volunteer model. So they're both, they're both just outstanding organizations that have a different, slightly different focus.
Yeah, just to connect the two dots.
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
Part of what came up last year, or maybe around this time last year, was that the backlog of requested repairs was very significant across the county. And I think that was one of the things that led to the discussion about revisiting the amount allocated to the housing services program in the first part. And I don't recall the specific data, but when we met with MHO specifically, and I think other agencies were reporting a similar thing, it was just hard to keep up with the demand for, and these were repairs like ramps so people could safely get in and out of their house, collapsed floors that were immediate dangers. I mean, these were not aesthetic, they became much more aesthetic in the repair, but these were fundamental, fundamental safety issues. So I'm very excited to see that there's been this movement in the last 12 months, and applaud the work staff has done, applaud the work that community partners have done. And, and also just for, if commissioners are interested in getting that sort of firsthand access to specific stories, I think those are there because I got them last year, and I'm guessing we could get them again from county or participating partners.
A concern, concern I have is that we're talking about people who need this work done now, in some cases, yesterday. And, you know, I have the trust in these organizations, they've been doing it for years. And I know, you know, a lot, several of them, and I know people have helped. But I don't want to see us hold this up tonight. I think this is something I want to see us approve so it can get done. You know, we have, the weather's changing and everything. And just going forward, you know, if we need the information, I think that you have, just make it, you know, available to us. But I'm fine with what they do, I mean.
We have 59, or MHO has 59 people on the waiting list right now.
Yeah, that's what, that's my concern.
So, and I don't think it's going to get held up tonight, but so my, I want to connect the dots. That's what I want to do. I mean, we've talked about, you know, manufactured housing for five years, you know, here in China, we need to get that pushed through, planning, we need to get, you know, some of these things where we can connect the dots and make, you know, homes more affordable and easier to live in. But we need to connect the dots of this with what we were talking about, Commissioner Farrar, the, that assistance program, and so that we can have a presentation that shows everything that we're doing. And if that's a million dollars a year, if it's $600,000 a year, whatever it is that we vote on, then I think, I think we need to put all these together so that, so that it makes more sense to me. But anyhow, I'm going to make a motion to approve it, and, but I would like to see that, that detail, would like to see us try to connect the dots and, and going forward.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Public comment, anyone wish to speak on the motion? Mr. Yelton?
I don't think wanting to know where your money go is bad on anything. Because how many people come up here and give you wonderful, great human causes? We're going to give them a free ride so they can get to work. There's nothing free in the world. And I think what you need to do is to follow the money. When I hear strategic partners, a little bell goes ding 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 ding. How much money is Buncombe County giving to that individual partner through various routes and means? And we have just got through going through a process where the previous administration shuffled money from one strategic partner to another partner. All were justified, all had job titles, all were doing their job. This is not being derogatory to any of you folks. Because there is a problem, a lot of people need help out there. But I'm going to tell you a story. A boy that I graduated from high school with, and I didn't find this out, a bunch of us old folks started meeting for breakfast. Now, we're in the old folks now, Al, believe it or not, you got a breakfast group meeting too, for some people. And we were out there eating, and this boy, this boy had a job at Strawberry Hill Press. Remember where it was at? He walked from Strawberry Hill Press to Barnardsville, North Carolina for six months to have a job. Now, that's what it takes. That's the initiative that we have to have in people. So when my money goes out, yes, I want to know exactly where it went and what it did. And you want to get more money to those causes? If you'll make that information available, guess what? There might be some churches become involved, rather than getting in their dad gym trucks and driving halfway across the country, or flying to another foreign country. And I think we have some people associated with churches up there. Just like I know of a church at one time was running Hispanics off from the church playing soccer on Sunday and loading up a whole busload of people and going to Mexico to witness to them. So folks, I want to see where the money's going. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, there's a motion, in a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next item under new business is Jennifer Chilton is going to talk us through a number of different FY19 budget amendment summaries. Before, before we conclude that, though, there was a request to just get some additional information. So if, I know every one of these organizations submitted an application for these, so how about if the applications for these projects that were approved be emailed to the commissioners?
That would be.
Sounds like folks would like more detail.
Yeah.
So if that could be done, that would be great.
Yeah, or you can drop them by the office, whatever, just copy them, send them, whatever.
And, okay. All right, great.
Thanks.
Very good. Yes, Jennifer, thank you for being with us.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So if I may go ahead and reference you to number six on your budget amendment summary. This particular budget amendment is in association with the Housing Trust of the Affordable Housing Services Program that was just discussed. Part of the amendment tonight is to request that we are able to budget the revenues and associated expenditures for proceeds or funds that were part, a portion of this program, which are loan repayment. So the program does receive loan repayments from individuals, and we are in receipt of $150,000 that we would like to increase the expenses in an effort to go ahead and maximize the total dollar amount that's being requested tonight to end the approval of those applications.
So you want us to take that one first?
That would be great.
All right. And so the motion would be to approve the FY19 Special Programs Fund for the Housing Trust Fund FY 2019 for loan repayment revenues of $150,000.
That's correct. We already, we are already in receipt of those revenues, so this increases the budget and then enables us to then expense the dollars out in association with the, with the application.
That makes sense. Some projects, we provide loans rather than grants, the loans get repaid, those funds can be reinvested. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So are we going to need a special, and a motion on all six of these items? Okay. Well, then here's what I'd like to do. I do want to take public comment on this, but I don't want to do it six times. So what I'd like you to do is just present each item, I'll ask for public comment on any of them, and then we're going to vote on each one that needs to be voted on.
Sounds great. So then I will go back to the beginning of your budget amendment summary. And for your reference, number one and number two are related. The first item, during the fiscal year 2019 budget adoption process, the board approved in the operating budget for the libraries expenditures for additional security camera installations, as well as wireless upgrades. In conversation with information technology, we anticipate that those projects will exceed this current fiscal year. So we are requesting that we transfer those dollars to be spent from the capital fund in order for us to ensure that the availability of that funding to complete the project is available beyond this fiscal year. So items one and two is for the ability to move those dollars from the general fund out of the library's current cost center into the capital fund specific for these projects.
In the amount of $138,000.
That is the total, correct.
Okay.
The third budget amendment summary is related to Articles 40 and 42 sales tax dollars. This is specific dollars that we are in receipt of, that we then directly pass back through to the school systems for their school capital funding, in accordance with the average daily membership, membership distribution. We are requesting the ability to increase the anticipated revenues, $15,702,644, also corresponding increase to the expenses so that we can then redistribute that back out to the schools. Items number four and five are related on the budget amendment summary. This is in relation to the discussion in your prior commission meeting on November the 20th for the request of an additional $1,300,000 needed for the East Asheville Branch Library Construction Project, specific to the schematic design for the East Asheville Branch Library. This is a request to appropriate additional fund balance from the general fund and establish these dollars in the capital projects fund to pair with the existing dollars already identified for the East Asheville Branch Library.
All right, item six, we've already covered.
And that concludes the budget amendment summary.
What about items seven? Seven and eight.
Seven and eight were moved to the consent agenda for the evening.
Oh, that's right, thank you. Very good, we're already done with this, great.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrar.
Okay. All right, is there a motion? Well, first of all, I'm just going to ask if there's any public comment on any of these proposed budget amendments. Mr. Yelton?
I have to take this opportunity, since it's a public comment, it will be documented, I hope, since these are budgets. Matter of fact, I notice your public comment never gets documented in your minutes now. Used to, it would get documented once in a while. Wonder why we don't document it now. Something you might want to look into. I have a very simple question. It has to do again with where does money go? Money's near and dear to my heart. And I ask a question of the previous administration. And I got the comment from another member of her previous generation, that it was a good question, and that the county should know it. So I'm going to remind you of it again. See, I've got a simple mind, but a complex brain. How much does each library cost? We don't know that yet. You're getting a new county manager, you're getting a new finance director. And being county commissioners is more than sitting up there and looking pretty. It's asking the hard questions, maybe disrupting the meeting once in a while and pushing to get your information. So I want to remind you. So I want to remind you, how much does each library cost? I have no objection to West Asheville getting a nice new library, but how much does each cost? And how many books are checked out? And how many electronic books are checked out? That's the same thing that we need to know about the other items, the housing trust fund, the fixing up of the houses. It's so simple. You just follow that little dollar, you've always heard, follow the money. And had we been following our money in the past, we wouldn't have had the problems that we do have now. So you tell the new county manager, and the new finance director what you want. Let's see if you tell her that.
Okay, great, thanks. Anybody else?
All right, I think the first item, and I please want to make sure we get each of these correctly, so I believe we can have one motion to approve items one and two, or do we need a separate motion on one and two? What we're trying to do is move $138,000 from the general fund to the capital fund.
That's correct, they are related.
Can that be a single motion to approve that? Okay. All right.
You down?
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the transfer of $138,000 from the general fund to the capital fund on the library item.
I so move.
I do want to make a comment, since our library director is with us, we've, we've heard, and this is about library, we've heard comments before about how much do the libraries cost, you know, what's, you know, and so on and so forth. So I mean, we could, you know, I mean, that's certainly something we can easily show, you know, over time, you know, quarterly, once a year, whatever, and show that, so, be easy to do.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next item is approval of pass-through funding for school capital funding in the amount of $15,702,644.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve item three, related to the public school ADM sales tax and lottery projects funding. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just to have a comment for-
Is anybody opposed?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
All right.
No, 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 I just have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
That's a $15 million motion, that's a pretty big, big motion for your first meeting over there, so, it's good.
It's no honeymoon period here.
Oh, $15 million.
I said I was ready from day one.
Okay, the next is related to items four and five, and this is appropriation of $1.3 million for the East Asheville Library.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next item is on the Housing Trust Fund, this is for $150,000 to program the funds that have come back to the county as previous loans have been paid off.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Jennifer, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, Jen.
Okay, let's do our board appointments. The first one is the Buncombe County Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team, there's one vacancy. And Vivian Snyder is, has applied, and is, there's a recommendation support.
I would move that we approve Vivian Snyder for membership, and also just take a moment to acknowledge that, move that we approve Vivian Snyder, and just take a moment to acknowledge the tremendous act of service this represents on behalf of our community. I sit on this body, and this is a position that would be filled by a parent who lost a child before their 18th birthday. It's been very, very hard to fill this position in our community for all the reasons any of us can imagine, and seems to me like an act of heroism on Miss Snyder's part that she's willing to do this, so, just wanted to add that additional context.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the other board is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one reappointment, Paula Garber is up for reappointment.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we've moved the Health and Human Services Board, we'll move that to our first meeting in January. Okay, now we're going to take public comment on any items that have not been previously had public comment on them in the meeting, are there any members of the public wish to you? Talk to us, Mr. Yelton.
I'd like to have six minutes on this one, but I'll just have to go real fast. First of all, we've got another question on the buses. I asked you a long time ago on boost, what's the ridership? We need to know the ridership on our own buses in the county, don't, before we look at city and county corporation? How can we look at city and county corporation we don't know? What's the ridership on that free ride? You know, if you've got to go to work, and you've got a free ride and one you pay for, which one are you going to take? I don't care what you drive, I don't care what you, you know, you're going to be smart, and if you're good with your money, you're going to take the one that's free. You know, and, and, and I saw all those numbers being floating around up there, and all of a sudden I said a million dollars, and sure enough, they bring up all the money, and guess what? It's going to be a million dollars a year down the road. So, it's amazing, and I saw something else. No, Mike, you were dead on, there's no such thing as free. Somebody's got to pay for it. Those free rides are being paid for by somebody. And if that money is going to the federal government, we only get about a quarter or 30 cents back on what goes up there. If it goes to Raleigh, we only get about 45, 50 cents of what goes down there. So, it's our money that's paying for all this stuff. I've heard a previous commissioner, Bill Standes, said, well, if we don't get it, it's free, we're going to lose it. No bullshit, ain't free. And then out of all of that, and all that money they want, in their plan that they gave you, extensions into the county specifically identified by City of Asheville. I suggest you read what he put up there on the board to go through each of those slides. Remember I said a minute ago, sitting up there is more than just looking pretty. Put your big boy pants on, and your big girl pants on, and when you ask a hard question, I watch every one of you up there back off, and start, well, it's good we're talking about combined with the city of Asheville. No, we need to know where the money's going. The city of Asheville needs to be able to tell you how many riders are riding on that line. Maybe some of the county city councilmen didn't ask those questions, which is why the bus system is in such trouble. Because, folks, there's computer programs that will outline truck delivery for you. Roberts, you know that, on truck delivery, your food service, they've got computers that'll tell the truck how to run a route to make it most efficiently. You don't have to do a $160,000 study, and that's going back to the previous administration. I'm telling you, folks, where is your money going? How many is riding the buses? That's another thing I've asked for in the past, it's another thing I ain't got. And I'm going to be asking for it until I get it, just like I want the checks on the internet and the line items like I was promised. Thank you very much. Perfect.
All right, thank you so much. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, and then, could you next?
I just want to thank each of you for your service and your opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity to put this in front of you. So I have been serving in family in crisis in Buncombe County, in this community and region, for about the last 25 years. And there has been a number of times that I've been in front of, and I hate to say it again, but the previous administration regarding the way child welfare cases, child protective services cases were handled. I am thankful for Mrs. Snyder's willingness to serve on the Child Protection Fatality Prevention Team. It is a, it is a, it's a critical need that we have in this county. I have said in the past that, you know, the federal government done an audit on the state of North Carolina, 11 counties, data was pulled from 11 counties, Buncombe County was one of them, and it showed that we failed to meet all of the outcomes that were measured, both in administrative and outcomes for children. The, one thing that I see as a consistent problem in the handling of child welfare cases is the improper investigations, incomplete investigations. And the investigation sets the case up for success or for failure. Now, there's a lot of reforms coming down, both from the state, you know, Raleigh's going to be regionalized, there's the Families First Act that's coming along, and we have the Children's Bureau who is requiring North Carolina to come up with a plan to reform child welfare in the state. I know that you guys, whoever gets appointed to the Health and Human Services Board, what I'm asking you to do is to focus on investigations, focus on investigations. The North Carolina Council on Women required that collateral contacts be made, personal contacts be made during investigations. That informed the North Carolina Child Welfare Policy. Now, this is information that was released by the, by the media, by Buncombe County Social Services at the media's request, and the pressure for public records request, and this was on Lala Pickering. I don't know if you guys remember her. I believe some of you do remember Little Miss Lala, okay? This is a problem, okay? So, you'll see in this case, in the investigation, within the first 35 days of the case, there were three reports of active addiction and domestic violence within the first 30 days of the case. There was also a 911 call where you could hear Lala saying, "Don't hurt my mama," in the background. There's no way that this should have been missed, substantial records available. We, this, that child was left with him for a year and a half. There's others, Elizabeth Eckelson, you know, and her teenage parents, there was problems in the backgrounds, but the investigations weren't handled properly. Please focus on the mandate to conduct interviews with collateral contacts during investigations, set these cases up for success. You know, Jesus said that, "Let the little children come to me, and don't hinder them." So you guys have responsibility for that, and I hope that you will see to it, okay? Thank you.
And ma'am, would you mind sharing your name and where you live?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I have my mic turned off. Could you share your name and where you live?
Kristy Schluter.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Leslie Colba, come on up. Yeah, and if, and if I didn't say it at the beginning, please share your name and where you live.
My name is Leslie Colba, I live in Asheville. And I was just wanting to call attention to a fact that last week in the Asheville City Council meeting, they discussed expanding transit into, they said, into the county, and they gave totally different reasons than anything I heard in the presentation. They were talking about enabling legislation, and getting the county to agree, which they didn't think, they thought it would be a hard, a hard job to persuade the county. And rather than blowing things by memory, by trying to remember what was said, I would just recommend just pulling it up on YouTube and seeing how the city of Asheville handled that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Jerry Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I ain't got time for this discussion today, but I'll be back to see, and that's on this reevaluation crap that he presented today, okay? It was already moved up one time, now you want it moved up again. You need to think about the taxpayers, not how you want to spend the money. Okay, the deadly or drug crisis that we don't consider public emergencies. Alcohol and tobacco kills far more people than opioids. Should they be considered as an epidemic? In 2016, there was linked to more deaths than gun car crashes, and even HIV/AIDS at the highest peak. We're not talking about opioids. Actually, it was associated with more deaths than guns and car crashes combined. I'm not talking about opioids, I'm talking about alcohol. According to the CDC, excessive drinking is linked to 88,000 deaths each year, more than the 64,000 drug overdose deaths in 2016. Alcohol isn't even the deadliest drug in the U.S., that would be what? Tobacco. Smoking is linked to 480,000 to 540,000 deaths each year. Yet, all of these deaths, did it inspire any current or past presidents of the United States to declare a public health emergency? No, not until President Trump declared an epidemic on opioids, which is not even the least, I mean, it's the least of these problems that I'm talking about tonight. So what is the issue? We live in beer city. Everything we see is connected to beer, wine, dope, sex trades, and everything, and our social service department is upside down with cases. That is affected by everything that I'm talking about tonight. And the only reason that we're talking about opioids is why? Because it's affecting, affecting the upper class in a way that they are forcing the issue, the upper class. Not the middle and the lower, but the upper class. Anytime that it gets your attention, it's because you're affected by it. Let me tell you, the things that we need to be concerned about is human life. We need to be talking about these real issues that I'm talking about tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, couple announcements. County offices will be closed for Christmas holidays on December 24th, 25th, and 26th, as well as January 1st, county offices will be closed for New Year's holiday. The county commission has tentatively scheduled to hold a special meeting on December 19th at 2:00 p.m. Mr. Wood, has that time been confirmed? We're going to start at 2:00 p.m. And that'll be a special meeting where we will go into closed session to consider applicants for the county manager position. And then the next meeting after that will be on Wednesday, January 2nd, at 5:00 p.m. All right, we do have a need for a closed session. Ms. Hockaday, could you tell us what the item is we're going to close session for?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion and a vote to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, to discuss a legal matter with retained counsel, and the matter is RAB Builders LLC petitioner versus Buncombe County respondent. It's a notice of appeal, having the file number 18CVS2406.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move, so moved, we're going to closed session.
There's a motion and a second. We do not anticipate taking any action when we come back out of closed session from this meeting, we will just adjourn. All in favor of the motion to go into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session.